Good morning, and welcome to the regular session for the County Board of Supervisors, February 11th. Roll call, please, Mr. James.
Brandt?
Here.
Curtin-Bach?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Paul?
Here. Take a moment to silence to reflect on today's actions. Please rise and join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Black Hawk County flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want agenda received, thrown, or as invented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Item two, public comments. This is for anyone in the audience, either in person or online, for an issue that's not on today's agenda. Next up, we've got presentations, Sheriff's Office Promotions.
Today's kind of a neat day for us. In 2016, we switched over or started transitioning from sworn officers in the jail to civilians. At that time, we really didn't know for sure how that was going to work, what it was going to look like, what it was going to grow into. And it's worked out great for us. It's been amazing, and I've got three people here today that exemplify the best of what that program could be. So today's the first time we're going to be promoting civilian sergeants up in the jail. So I'm going to start off with Jesse Meyer coming up here. Jesse was actually promoted on February 2nd. So, a little bit about Jesse. One second here. I was told last time I was too close, so I had to move back. Jesse actually started with us as a master controller and then left as a cop down in New Orleans. Obviously, saw some stuff down there, but made his way back up here to us, back to master control again, and then switched over to detention officer. In that time, he's taken on a lot of things that normally a sergeant would have done anyway. He's taken over a field training officer program for the last couple of years now, probably. Prior to that, that's always been held by a sergeant, but he stepped up and did it. When we switched over to starting having some civilians carry firearms, he was the first one to put in for that, and he's been doing that. Defensive tactics instructor. The guy already does so much for us, and now it's an honor to make him the first sergeant that we've had on civilian ranks. So Jesse.
My wife's really...
Jesse's wife.
You're all with it.
Probably not the first pinning ceremony you've done.
No.
You don't get to slam it into his chest.
I only did the one in New Orleans, thankfully. I didn't have to do that.
Didn't have to do the others.
Get their stuff under there.
So without the full uniform, they don't have the badge, so we're not getting the pinning ceremony like we did with the other, but we do have the collar brass with these guys, so that's close enough. It looks great. Probably now that you have to do two instead of just one. If you don't want to do the back, you just put the front in, and then you just hit it, and it'll stay.
There.
There you go. All right. Nice work. Congratulations, Jesse.
Thank you.
All right.
Sheriff.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have Kirsten Reese come on up. Kirsten also started with us as a master controller before we even had civilian detention officers. Then she made the transition over, so she is one of the, or basically tied for the longest tenure detention officer that we have with, actually, just Heidi's the only other one left at this point. And she's taken on a bunch of other stuff, too. She's taken over the, or had been doing until recently, all the religious ceremony stuff, helped the inmates out with that stuff. One of our best field training officers, done a lot with that, and introduced a new program last year, the Rookie of the Year Program, that she then dumped off on me. And she's just done a lot of other things for us, so another one, very proud to have you promoted, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We should have you start doing one. Bizney, let him get up here. So Colton's been with us since 2017, I believe. Didn't start off as a master controller, started off where he's at, and has been doing a great job for us. He's one that I honestly, you don't hear much out of him, doesn't talk a whole lot, so I wasn't real sure where he was at, honestly. But as we started talking to people about who would be good, who would, the people that put in for it, invariably, all your peers, your sergeants, everyone else was like, Leon O'Connell. O'Connell's the guy you want there. He's the first one that if somebody's doing something either wrong or could be done better, pulls them aside, has a quiet conversation with them, sends them back on their way, not looking for the glory, not looking for that, just doing the right thing, even though, as far as you know, nobody's watching. Another neat thing with them, up until a recent knee injury, seven years, almost eight years, hasn't called in sick a single time. So I mean, I was in today's day and age, that's kind of a unicorn, so I definitely appreciate that. But the work ethic thing is just great, and I look forward to the positive impact you're going to have of that, so.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
I have to get on the immune system that he's on.
Right? I need to get my office on that plan.
Slide that one.
Do? You gave me two, right?
Yep. It's going to hit the floor.
See, I think you guys did better, so.
A photo?
You have, hang on. You two want to come up real quick here?
Yeah.
We'll go in descending order.
One, two, three. Awesome. Great.
All right.
That everybody?
That's everybody.
Okay.
Thanks for the time, Board.
Of course. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors approving expenditures. The county auditor authorized and direct to issue the payments against the various settlements of such claims as a law.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $549,208.16. The sheriff's 60-40 fund is $1,895.20. We do have a few construction payments today. We're paying for furniture for the new auditor's area, $34,899.31. We are making the payment to Cedar Falls Community Schools for the Natoryum contribution due to the CAT grant. That's $150,000. And there is an annual maintenance fee for election systems and software for $70,068.22. And then there's some other ARPA construction payments, about $110,000 or so. Those are all contracted. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions today?
Motion is second. Roll call, please, Mr. James.
Brandt?
Yes.
Curtin-Bach?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item five, receive prior application apartment heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Agent here. A little bit of snow this morning. Our crews are out for a little bit, plowing it, spreading a little bit of salt and sand. Snow expected here tonight and into tomorrow, and then it looks like again later in the week, we'll likely be out dealing with that for most of the week this week. From along this far.
Thanks, Ryan.
Good morning, Board. Linda Lovell, Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. I'm here because today's March 50th year in the county. Nate, I guess we could go out and rob... No, I'm just playing. But I did want to thank a few people. I do want to thank Amanda, she was, to tell you the truth, but Linda and Chris, you guys have been with us for the long run. You know, I have more years behind me than I have ahead of me. And so I just want to thank the Board, in particular, the two new Board Supervisors, for coming on board, and we just ask that you continue to support the veterans and our little small staff as we try to do great things in the county. Just want to share just a couple, because I know it's a big meeting today, and a long meeting, but just a couple of slides in that standpoint. We're all still working on the county's mission statement. This is still ours. We may be subject to change based off the county in that standpoint, but just wanted to share a couple of things. Mr. Ron Kirkland was a great guy who did a lot of good things in the community. I like how he said he was a man of man, which he was, a two-term Vietnam veteran. He served two tours in Vietnam as a Navy CP. He was the state commander for the ANVETS. We tragically lost him in December due to the suffering from the effects from exposure to the herbicides. He had different effects, and it finally took an effect on him. And it's happening to a lot of our Vietnam-era veterans, but again, we just, in honor of him today, and his wife, and all the other veterans who have either transitioned or still suffering from the exposure, we just celebrate each one of them. With our relocation timeline, these slides have already been sent to you guys, they're just still in great work. We're just, are very excited that one day we're going to see this picture, and I hope that all of the veterans that are in our county will be able to take advantage of it. Just real quick, our January production, those are the numbers associated. But over to the right is really what I kind of want to articulate is, you know, 1.2 million in the last six months in retro pay that between our staff, between the active community that are telling veterans to come to our office, when the VA approves those compensations or the pensions, this is the return on investment from that person applying. And with our office, all we are are conduits to the VA. We just do the paperwork. But it's great to see the rewards that our surviving spouses and our veterans are getting for their disabilities. And then, over here in this slide over to the right, again, we talked about February, January being a pretty much slow month. We only had 137 come to our door, and only 15 new, and that's unusual. We normally have about 30 new veterans who have never came in our door before. But we're looking at also with the partnership with Gabby, trying to figure out how do we reach the outlying cities within Blackhawk County. And so we're starting to keep a tab on the other cities in Blackhawk County that normally, that are within Blackhawk County, and we want to see how many of them are coming in monthly. And so we started it this month, so you can kind of see how we're going to build on that. Only one from Leport City, only one from Hudson. So it kind of gives us a metric of, do we need to spend more time in Leport City or Hudson, or something of that nature, to make sure that they are aware of what we do in our office. The other thing that's unique is, we're going to start identifying the other counties that come into our office to provide services for. And the unique thing about the other counties is, once we help that, those three veterans in Grundy, the actual pay that they get for compensation goes to Grundy County and not to Blackhawk County. But we still want to just identify who's coming in, in that standpoint. And then we started collecting where our matrix are with our fighting forces, and you can see the Army is the dominant one for this month, in that standpoint. This is kind of convoluted, but what I really wanted to show you was, out of the, this is the state of Iowa in December, and that first, this total awards for the month, there's 51,000 awards that are, 51,000 veterans and surviving spouses receiving awards for the month of December for the whole state of Iowa, 99 counties. Out of the top eight, I'm going to show you that next, the top eight is receiving about 25,000 of that, in that standpoint. I'll show that to you. The other thing I wanted to show you was, over on the, all the way over to the right is determinations. Determinations are the deaths that we've had in the month of December. What that means is that now that claim or that disability that person receives stops, in that standpoint. So just kind of wanted to show you that, that in 50, it's only 51,000 veterans in the whole state of Iowa that are receiving compensation. Then it comes back to this. When we look at the top eight, so we have, in Blackhawk County, we have 20, you know, 2011 receiving some type of benefits. Our biggest consumer of, you know, is Polk County with 9,000. But when you take that totality, that's, that's half of the states, half of the state's veterans receiving disabilities, and then the other 91 counties pick up the other half, in that standpoint. We're still doing a great job with our budget, in that standpoint. Nothing here to kind of articulate or speak on. And then, just recently, our, what we did for the month of January, we paid rent for two veterans, we provided a hotel for a homeless veteran that was transitioning, needed assistance, and then the gas cars donated. And then for our trust fund, it was about 13K that veterans received home repairs and auto repairs. And then you can see our staff production for the month of January, again, another kind of what we call a slow month, but we still did do some, a few things, and this is including our commissioners and our staff. Michelle and Sarah went to coffee and camaraderie to introduce Sarah, and they received her well in that standpoint. Other than that, I'm just standing by addressing the questions and concerns, and again, just to say thank you for the five years that I've had in that standpoint, and all of the support that our office has received from the Board of Supervisors, from Michelle, and from all the other departments within the county.
Hey, Leon, I just, one of the, somebody I know, I wanted to extend a great deal of gratitude to Stacy for the work that she did to help him get set up with benefits over the last few months. So he's beyond grateful, so he just wanted to pass that along. So, and then, I also just wanted to take my hat off to Michelle as well, because she's been pretty helpful with me, or for me, for some things, too, so.
So I'll make sure I pass those cool ones on to their staff, because it is the staff that makes the, makes our total success. It's not a person. It's us as a collective group, living by our mission statement, helping veterans. Sure that I pass that on.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hold on, did you mention it during the budget about that $10,000 allocation that the state has typically always, I guess, given to local communities? Have you had any update on that, as far as where you think that's going to go?
Right now, it's still a safe solid. In April, we'll find out who are spring training. Additionally, give us $3,000, so just for training, on top of the $10,000, but we have to use the $3,000 for federal training, in that standpoint. But the $10,000, the last meeting we had, it was supposed to have been safe going forward, because some of the other 99 counties wasn't using it to the fullest. And then, so the question was from some of our congressional staff, why they're not using it for that. But our state president has been very active on us to make sure that we are using it in our, in fact, we only have $500 left of that $10,000, because we've been using it in, using it for buying gifts when we go out and do tabling for events, but a lot of it has been for our radio ads, courier ads, things of that nature. So we try to take advantage of using it every month.
Okay. And then you brought that to our attention, just in case, that that was kind of jeopardy, so it was like, you know.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you, and I'm hoping that, they're still in session now, and so hopefully, they will look at, hey, that, and not an ex. Thank you.
Thank you. Good report, too. I was going to say, not just thanks for that, but it was a very good report.
Good morning, Board. Nina Bessmer, HR Director. Just really quick, couple things. We have the Policy Review Committee meeting today after the board meeting. If for some reason that gets pretty long, we may kind of reschedule part of that if needed, but planning to meet here after the board meeting, and we're going to be discussing, we've got our HIPAA policy that's revised from Iowa State Associates to counties, their updates, we've got the bidding on the local preference amendment to discuss, and then there's a tobacco policy, looking at adding vape products, and then we also have some newer policies, so those are all existing, just updates for that. And then we have expenditures for public purpose, that's regarding meeting refreshments, training, kind of coordinating those types of things. Artificial intelligence policy, and then we will have others, kind of as just requested, so. And then also wanted to just give an update on the Sergeants Union that was bargained last month with myself and Mike Galloway, as well as Nate F. So they are planning to ratify that tentative agreement, and then we'll come back and actually present it to the board in closed session. So that will be coming up yet likely this month. So, but it was a good negotiation, still that we were able to achieve a lot, and at least kind of continue that career progression in the sheriff's office, even with the two public safety unions. Any questions at all? Both? Thank you.
We'll move on to item six, minutes approved for the February 4th meeting.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Item seven, there is a hearing slash bid opening for the FY25 pavement marketing project headed by Senator F. Take item eight, census agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, census agenda, all in favor.
Resolution.
Yep.
Curtin-Bach?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Item nine, A, other business, motion of the appointment of Melissa Clark as a representative of Blackhawk County Board of Health be approved with the term ending December 31st, 2027.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second.
I was just happy that we had a lot of really great applicants for this position, and everybody that we interviewed was, did, would have been excellent on the board, and so in addition to having Melissa serve on the board, now we've got a good roster of folks as other openings come up, which is a nice position to be in for our boards.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Once there's another discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Item nine B, a motion of the appointment of Rodney Platt as a representative for the Blackhawk County Planning and Zoning Commission be approved with the term ending June 30th, 2029.
So moved. Second.
Session. All in favor.
I guess just a comment a little bit, I guess, about Rodney as well. He's a resident of Blackhawk County. He had been farmed, he said, for over 20 years. Recommend you that don't recall the same way, because I said, I'm just kind of going by some of the information, but he'd farmed for over 20 years. I think he'd been at Agvantage in, wait, really for 21 years. He'd brought projects before us for himself, for planning and zoning, but he'd also said he'd worked it with like over 30 projects, I think, over Iowa and this kind of borders regarding zoning. So, a lot of information. Anything follows our meetings now? Yeah, regularly, so that was kind of unusual, so great.
Think we walked out, couldn't have got, they targeted it.
Yeah.
Well, if he's watching, hi Rodney.
Yeah. He does all the P&amp;Z ones anyway, he said. Questions are coming, so yeah, it's great to have.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, that motion also carries. Item nine C, resolution to schedule a public hearing on proposed transfer of easement interest for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 9:05 a.m. in the Board Room 201, Blackhawk County Courthouse, and to publish a notice of the same as required by Lloyd, which time interested persons may be heard as to a proposed resolution to transfer by quitclaim to the Blackhawk County interest in a certain easement to the public highway dated February 20th, 1980, filed for recording on March 21st, 1980, as recommended by county attorney. So moved. Second. Motion in the second.
All right. So what this is, is there's a, there's a stretch of highway that's, or a stretch of county road that is now fully annexed into Cedar Falls. We're just looking, and they, they asked to do this so that they could, you know, kind of take over control and not have to seek our approvals on things, which makes sense here. They asked that we transfer our interest, which happens to be an easement for public right-of-way, to them. I don't think it's, that's something that would probably bring about a lot of controversy here, given it's been annexed into the city.
We've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Mr. James.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Curtin-Bach?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Item nine D, a resolution to approve the participation in Blackhawk County Grouping Health Insurance Plan for the Education Outreach Coordinator position at the Blackhawk County side of the Wase Management Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. There's a discussion.
You have questions, but you got them answered.
Yeah. Michelle did a wonderful job making things make sense, so we can hurt, feel good about things. All right. Mr. James.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Curtin-Bach?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Item nine E, hearing bid opening, motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice in public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Mr. Chick?
I just wanted to report their word and written comments.
It's okay.
Good morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Agent here. These are bids for our 2025 pavement marketing project. Some information for some of the new board members. We do solicit our bids, both online and still do receive paper bids as well, so we have four paper bids today.
I just wanted to report their word and written comments.
Morning, Board. Right, we're gonna assist them right here. These are bids for our 2025 pavement marketing project. Some information for some of the new board members. We do solicit our bids both online and still do receive paper bids as well. So we have four paper bids today. We had two bids online, so I can go ahead and post two. The first one would be from Parnar Asphalt. And then we have one from Advanced Traffic Control. It is $199,954.49. Or the traffic control bid is $215,482.10. And again, we have four paper bids as well that I will attend. First one is Highway Signing out of Council Bluffs. Bid was $230,093, 230, 093, 00. The next bid I have is from Iowa Plane Signing, Slater, Iowa. For $248,664.80, 248, 664, 80. Next one is from Quiker Contracting of Cedar Falls, Iowa. I like our electronic ones much better. Paper to open. Their bid is $191,940.30, 191, 940, 30. And the last one is from Vogal Traffic Services. Their bid is $185,437.54, 185, 437, 54.
We have a motion to. The board supervisors review and place on file bids allowed, allow time to review said bids and recommend.
So move, second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, a work session. Couple of work sessions. FY '26 budget. Presentation by the World Libraries.
Morning.
Morning, Board.
You can go ahead and hand them up.
I don't know if you want it or not, I think some of these are asked that they can read.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah.
So my name's David Eckert. I'm the library director for the Waterloo Public Library, and so I'm here on behalf of all the libraries for Blackhawk County to give you our annual presentation of everything. And so, as you can see, these are the eight, seven cities plus the unincorporated part. The total's about 127,000 people all told, with all these combined that we, we serve. And so, just to sort of point out some of the highlights, I'm not going to read everything for you. There's, there's a lot on here, so don't, unless you want me to. Yeah, I don't think so. So, you know, but, you know, libraries, we're trying to build desirable communities. We're always on those places where they're trying to bring in businesses and things like that. So we're always sort of the quality of life, you know, we're trying to help bring in the economic, to increase that in the area. Some of us are, some of the libraries are working on achieving sustainability. There's a, there's a movement right now in some of the libraries across the country to, to really do that. And we do a good job of that because when we weed books out, then we turn around and we sell them at the friends bookshops and things like that. So we're, we're trying to always, you know, use our stuff. On the next page, you can see that we also have a lot of technology for the people that can't afford it or can't get it, you know, so all of our libraries have Wi-Fi use and computers that they can use. And we have other things like maker spaces and all kinds of things people can come in and use. Again, they don't have to have it, they can't afford to get it, so they come in and use it at our locations. We all try to work together. We've been working for several years now on the Dolly Parton Imagination Library that you know. And you can see that we've, we've served a lot of, a lot of people over the, a lot of kids over the years with that. That's a really great program. And then we also try to help out with people that are, you know, looking for jobs and, or, you know, getting information, or there's some of us offer services like passport services and notaries and all kinds of stuff like that. So I think in general, libraries just, we just try to fill a lot of little niches that kind of nobody else does in any of the communities. Or at least we do it and it doesn't cost any money, and anybody's welcome to use the library. So let me walk you through some of the highlights of some of the different, of some of the different libraries. So at Cedar Falls, Waterloo and Cedar Falls came together this last year, and we got another new integrated library system, and it was about half the cost of what we were paying for the old one. And it's more updated, and it's more user friendly, and it's more accessible with, for the patrons and things like that, so we're really happy about that. They also have a really great program for prenatal reading program with, they've corp, they've gone together with Allen's Women Health, and so that really helps to promote reading from the beginning and things like that. And they get a board book, and so that's really, that's really good. At Dunkerton Public Library, they continue to work with their local schools. They had a, they have an annual Bridge the Reading preschool class visit, and they have pre-K through fifth grade come and sign up for library card signup month. You can see that their totals of their events and programs have increased from 88 and 23 to 94, 194 and 24. They've got more than 2,000 people come for those. They've had an increase of circulation by 50%, and so that's really good. And again, they offer a lot of different things, such as puzzles, games, hotspots, things like that. At the Evanston Public Library, they got a new printer, and so that's really been helping out with printing and scanning and copying and faxing. Again, not a lot of cost there for people to come. They've had an increase of 44% in their e-material this last year. They had an increase in their door count of 27%. And so it's really, you know, again, shows that we're a vital part of the communities that we serve. A lot of people are coming in and using our services. At the LaPorte City, the Hawkins Memorial Library, they had a, the program, they hosted a lunch. They fed about 510 kids with that. That was a good program. Some of their, some of their things have also increased. They got new computers in there, and that increased their usage by 50%, so that's been really good. And they increased their digital material. The circulations went up by about 400 people, so that's been good for them. At the Hudson Public Library, they partner with the local and the county police for, for children's programming. They, they're the ones that are really working on the Sustainable Libraries Initiative, try to, try to really do that. You know, they provide a gathering space for educational programs for adults and things like that. So again, pretty vital for, for that community. At the Janesville Public Library, they got a new building. If you haven't been out there to see it, it's a really nice space. If you get a chance to go out and look at that, they saw, they, they, they had an annual count of, rose about 2,500 people, and they had about 550 people in their programs. And, yeah, they, they went to 59 programs in 2024, so it's really given them a better way to have programs. I don't think that their space they had before was really tight. They didn't really have a lot of opportunity to do that, so that's been a really great, really great thing for them. At the Waterloo Public Library, if you haven't been in, we were able to move our youth department around. We put up a wall to help with safety and things like that. We also put up a glass wall in our teen area, so that's been helping with noise and giving them a real space to, to hang out. And, and, you know, we want them to have fun. We don't want them to make too much noise, mind you, but, you know, and we want to see them, which is why there's a glass wall. Right, so I'll point that out, but. And then we were also, we were able to partner with the Cedar Valley Woodworkers. They saved us several thousand dollars, and they donated time, and they built our, our front desk for us. And so that's been really good. We were able to use that money to get another desk for the, for the youth department. And so that was a really great partnership that we, that we had with them. So just talking about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library a little bit, these are some of the real numbers that you can see since, as of 2024, these are the, the totals. We've had more than 2,600 register out of the 8,800 that were, were available. So we're hitting about 30% of, of the kids that are able to sign up for this. And so in some areas, you can see, like in some, in Hudson, I know they, they hit more than 50%. In the rural Blackhawk County, they're at more than 50%. So again, it's had a really great impact. And I will say, it's not just that the kids get a book, but they get mail, which I know you don't think about it, but they never get any mail, so for them to get a piece of mail that, that's their own, has their, their name on it. So, so that's really good. They get one once a month, and they, that's been a really great program for us, and so. So just to sort of end, this is just a, this is just a saying, that public libraries are no longer just places of reading and private study, but are community and cultural centers, living rooms for cities, digital hubs and media. I don't know what that word is. And are not just for the storage and access of print. The library is a people's palace and a key element in urban placemaking, so. Anyway, so this year, we're asking for an increase of a 7.6% increase. And if you can look down, last year, we, you gave us a total of $2,201,824. It was a $20.28 per capita, and so we're trying to raise that up a little bit. I think we're still below the state average. We're never quite, we're, we're getting better, getting closer to that, but I don't know what the state average is. But you can also see some of the other counties close by. Bremer County, they're at $27, $27.47 per capita, and Runde is at $42.38 per capita. So I'm not trying to break the bank or anything like that, but we're just trying to keep up with our costs and things like that, so. Did you have any questions that I can be the answer for you?
What's the current status of your funding on Dolly Parton? Like, when are you slated to run out of the program, or?
Probably Kelly can speak about that a little bit better than I can, so.
Yes, right now, we have about three months left worth of funding. We were at the end of 2024, approved for a grant from the McElroy Foundation. We know we'll receive it sometime in 2025, we just don't know when. We just recently applied for a grant from the Northeast Iowa Community Foundation as well, but we, we haven't heard anything from them yet. So we're constantly applying for grants. It's like we're, we're staying just ahead of it so far, so.
So if we were to include something in this year's budget, is July too late, or do you need?
No, that would be great. We still have, if we get the, the grant that we just applied for, I think, what did I say? We need to still raise $50,000?
I think so.
To get us through the end of this year?
Okay.
And then next year, based on the enrollment projections, we'll need to raise about $150,000 next year to continue.
Is it about $150,000 per year?
It increases as your enrollment increases. So this year, it's going to be about $100,000, next year, it's going to be about $150,000, so.
I mean, when we started it, the idea was to really have it last for five years. And then Dolly Parton, they're, that organization has been doing it for so long that they can look at your population, and they can pretty much tell you how much you need to make it through the five years. And I think it was, all told, it was like $335,000 or something like that, to, to make it through the five years. And so this is year three that we're in.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just FYI, there's a group of administrators like us, people who administer this program for other areas of Iowa, who are actively at the Capitol advocating for the state to take on half the cost for geographic areas in Iowa that decide to provide it for their residents. There are other states that do that. Dolly's home state of Tennessee was the first one to do that. So the state provides half the cost of the book, the geographic area has to raise the other half. I don't think it's going to pass this year, but that would be a great help to us because it would cut the cost of the program in half, and it would allow us to extend it beyond the five-year cycle that we're committed to right now.
Yeah. And just so you understand, I mean, Dolly, them, that, that organization really does save a lot of money. So we're talking about books that maybe would cost you $10 to $20 for a hardback pa, paper, you know, a hardback picture book, and I think the cost is, finally, they raised it up to $2.20.
$0.60.
Or $2.60 a book. So that's all, how much it's really costing us, is $2.60. And so they really, again, they, they themselves have tried to cut the cost down. Everybody's trying to cut the cost down, and then they don't charge you for mailing or anything like that. So that's $2.60, which covers the book and the mailing of the book out, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
When you typically ask for grants in the community, too, is that a certain size grant that you ask for? Or is it just when you mentioned they'd be helping you this year? You thought, you didn't know when it would be coming, but it would be coming?
We request the maximum amount that they'll allow us to request when we apply for grants.
Yeah, I think the foundation is $25,000 is the maximum for them, and then some of the other macro, I think, could be $30,000 for those.
We received $30,000 from currency last year, so, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions that I can delight and amaze?
Figure out what that word is.
Okay. Figure out what that word is, yeah. Since I didn't make this, the guy that made this, unfortunately, he's in library school, and he has a class today, so it's going to come into itself.
Next up, changes in fund balance.
Guess that's me, huh? Yeah, is that the word? All right.
Michelle, let me know when you're ready.
Yep. I'm almost, I'm ready now. That's it. All right. I get quite a few questions. There we go. About, and I am in the PowerPoint right now. Should have a copy of that, blue cover. I know you have lots of handouts today. I get lots of questions about the cash that we have on balance, which are related, but different things. So I thought it might be helpful to review what our audit looked like at June 30th of 2024 and compared to the prior year. So when you, when you look at our statement of revenue and expenses, you will see the total change being 1.2 million, but half of that went to types of things that did not be spent for other things, so they've already been designated for specific uses. So the line, and I've highlighted it in the dark blue on here, the line that's really available for spending would be what we call the unassigned fund balance. would be what we call the unassigned fund balance. And that that did rise some in two thousand and twenty four by six hundred and twelve thousand, which is quite a bit less than the trend we were on during, and I'll talk a little bit more about COVID and some other things in the past. So really, our departments, that's that's six hundred and twelve is pretty much the cumulative change. Everything from extra revenue to less revenue than expected, vacancy money, that's that's everything. That the net of what all our departments spent in unrestricted funds, they spent six hundred thousand less than we expected them to. And this chart shows what has been the change in a assigned, unassigned fund balance, sorry, for years. And I I started with fiscal eighteen because I wanted to show there's a significant increase to the level at fiscal nineteen. And that appears to be primarily from the sale of Countryview. There were other things, of course, too, but that that's the accounts for the largest difference. Then from fiscal nineteen, probably all the way up until about fiscal twenty two, we continued to see pretty significant jumps in that unassigned fund balance. That was really during COVID. There, so probably in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, I think, the first round of federal funding came out that was called CARES funding. That was available to be used pretty much for salaries. And so that accounts for some of that jump. Then just throughout COVID, our largest departments, primarily the Sheriff's Department and the Health Department, struggled to fill vacant positions. People just did not want to have to work somewhere where they were going to be working with other people. So we had, again, substantial savings through about fiscal twenty two. It still has grown a little bit in twenty three and a little bit in twenty four. And twenty four is really the first budget that I worked with. And we we, I'm trying to budget more accurately, I guess, so to bring that down. Because when we do that, we're, when you see those big jumps in fund balance, we're kind of taxing people more than we needed to, right? So I'm trying not to do that, but still allow our departments to have the resources to get the work done that they do. So that takes us through June of twenty four. And you can see I'm projecting, and these are educated guesses. And all I can tell you is I'm quite sure all those numbers are wrong. I don't have a good crystal ball. But based on what I know today, this is one option of what might happen over the next three years. I think we're going to see that begin to decline for a few reasons that we'll talk about a little bit more later. And we'll also talk about the fund balance, spend out plan, all some other things that we started talking about a year ago. I've also been asked about our operating performance. And I do have more detailed schedules that just are difficult to put up on the screen. There's so many numbers. So if anyone would like those, I can either give you a printed copy or email them. But you can see that through the end of January, and I intentionally use the end of January because at year end, we are an accrual basis. That means in June, we're going to add all the bills that come in after June thirtieth, but our four services provided before June thirtieth, we're going to add to our June monthly expenses. So you always need, it's almost a month on the payables, not payroll, of course. That's usually about a week that we have to accrue back into the previous year. But when you get to the end of January, these, that fifty three, fifty two percent is probably pretty much where it should be at that time of the year. Same with general supplemental. And of course, we've received about half our property taxes now. So that actually shows a little low probably for that. So I'm showing you how we're doing general fund, the general supplemental, and the rural fund, secondary roads and local option. Those are our largest operating funds. I I have not included other smaller funds such as the opioid fund or an ARPA because it's really project driven. I don't have that in here, but this gets you most of our operations.
The local option tax fund expenses lower, I mean, everybody else is kind of, everything else about fifty percent, whatever.
Right. We haven't done a lot of construct, road construction yet. That's really what that is. And Ryan might be able to address that. And I'm sorry I'm catching you unprepared, but I think there are larger projects planned for fiscal twenty six. So they may have been holding some funds in twenty five to use in twenty six, is my assumption. But it is an assumption, so. So I also, I know it feels like I'm jumping around, but there are points to all this, which we will get to. The next thing I really want to talk about a little bit is, and GO stands for general obligation. So our general obligation bond limitations for county. This is all pretty much state law, combination of some federal, but mostly state law. Public and House File seven eighteen changed this. So these, some of these things were, are not as familiar to us because they've just changed in the last couple of years. But public buildings, you can build or renovate a public building as long as your cost does not exceed one point five, six million. If it's going to exceed that amount, you have to have a referendum or a public vote to do that. And I I don't know, shoot, I forgot to find out if this passed or not. There was a provision that you could only have those referendums at the general election in even numbered years. But I don't know if the even numbered year provision is still in there. I I need to double check that. So that's your primary purpose for public buildings. There, there is something called essential corporate purpose for counties that will cover things such as roads would be the biggest thing, a few other items. But many of our projects fall under the general corporate purpose definitions. And in order to do those without a referendum, we can't spend more than four hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars on each of them of bond money. Now, it's interesting, there is a difference between the essential purpose, which buildings fall under in general. Under the public buildings, it, that vote requirement is based on the total cost of the project, not only the amount that you're bonding for. So if you want to build, let's say you want to build only a two million dollar building and you have one point nine million of it, but for some reason, you just can't get that last hundred thousand and you want to have, to use a hundred thousand of bond money, you would have to have a public vote. Doesn't, it doesn't necessarily make sense. It's just what the law is, so.
Is there a corporate purpose, that four hundred thousand of, that's just of the bonded portion or is that total?
That is just the bonded portion as I understand it. So that's a little bit different, but it's different projects. Conservation projects, for example, or many other of the things that you see in our CIP would fall under that general limit. And conservation, again, also has some quirks. They're kind of limited to the acquisition and development of conservation land. So we have a unique thing. As long as the buildings are in a park, that's considered a conservation project. Our administrative building is not in a park and does not have a park around it. So it does not fit that. I believe it falls under the public buildings, likely under the essential corporate purpose, however.
If it was located in a park, we maybe could do the admin building?
Well, you can do it either way, just we're going to have to follow a little bit different process. And and really, the the important. The important change that happened under House File seven eighteen is that equipment is just not eligible to be paid for using bond funds now. They just removed, there was a clause that they kind of called a catchall phase for other things. And they, the negotiation was to remove that, I guess, at the time that law was passed. That has a direct impact on us, which is why I'm circling back and talking about this, is that affects all our departments. So I've been working on the, our capital improvements program because the question in my mind is how do we fund equipment into the future? We know, we've looked at our operating budget. We know that for the general basic levy, which is how we pay for most operations, we're over that limit right now by about four hundred thousand. And that is based on assumptions that I've pretty much shared with you already. Though that gap could grow or shrink depending on decisions that the board makes here in the next few weeks. So if we, so our options, if we can't use that general basic levy to purchase equipment, how do we do it? We can't use bond money. So we really, at that point, only have one option left, which is using our general fund. And I use the term reserves here because saying general fund, fund balance, sounds awkward, but they're the same thing. Reserves and fund balance are the same thing. So the next question in my mind was how much equipment does the county actually need? How much do we actually need to purchase? And our current capital improvement plan, which you have seen the individual sheets from each department, it totals, and I did include fiscal twenty five in this since we're still kind of in that year, but it's six point six million dollars. So and when I say equipment, I'm kind of being generous with that term. So those are all the types of projects that Bond Council has determined are not eligible for bond funding. But so that's kind of the definition that I'm using for that.
You know how much of that, and I'm putting you on the spot, but those are the for fiscal year twenty five?
Not a million, twenty four thousand. Oh, yeah, something like that. So as we, we started talking last year, okay, how do we? We know that our fund balance is high right now compared to what most experts, I guess I'll call it, would recommend. So it it seemed like a good goal to use that fund balance to fund the capital projects, at least that are not eligible for bonding. Actually, last year, I did show you an exhibit. If we just funded all our capital projects, what would happen to that unassigned balance? And it it gets spent down really quickly. But so the first thing I'm showing you on this slide is just some target levels. So that front, that top line there, if we decide that we should retain forty five percent of that, that's approximately five point four months of expense. That would assume we don't have any other revenue, which we know that that won't be accurate, but that just is a measure to show you. And I've, that estimated expense is a little bit higher for fiscal twenty five, and I will show you why. There's several commitments that we've made this year that will increase our spending. So as we spend that down, we would have about six point four million left that could be used for other things, such as the future capital that we don't have a way to fund. If you wanted to go down to forty two percent, and I just kind of arbitrarily picked some numbers here. That forty two percent is five months. That would give us eight million to use in other ways. Forty percent, slightly more, and something's wrong with that number. That's not, that's not eight point eight million. That's, oh, yeah, it is. That's right. That's correct. Eight point eight million that we could spend in other ways. And if we drop to thirty five percent, which is probably lower than I would like to see us go, we'd have eleven million. So I've really spent some time thinking about this. I would like to see us keep our total unassigned fund balance, if we could, up in the forty to forty five percent range. And the reason for that is, I think twenty five percent is our bottom minimum. But if you drop to that, then you have zero flexibility to do anything because you're struggling to maintain it. And each year, because costs rise, each year, twenty five percent of expenses is a larger number. So you get to a place where you have to keep adding just to say the twenty five. And it typically, except for those, you know, two, two major things that have occurred in the last several years, which is selling a property and COVID pandemic that we certainly hope never happens again in my lifetime. We, I don't know that we typically, it's difficult to increase your fund balance in general, other than by small amounts. So that's why it's really hard to say, oh, gee, we've got, you know, we've got eleven million dollars. We could go do something with that. We could, but I think the long-term effect of that causes some problems down the line. Also reduces our ability to have investment earnings, which are helpful, and especially in in staying under that general basic levy cap.
Ex their bond rating.
Ex their bond rating. As always, bankers want to lend money to people who have money.
Money.
That's just how the game works, so that is true.
There are certainly entities within the state who articulate that twenty five percent.
There are.
They're wrong, but that's where they're at.
It is, it's, it's out there, yeah.
Well, some have to. I mean, some are lucky to be at twenty five. We were not at twenty five when I started.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I know, I I've spent decades of my life trying to get.
But they've articulated the desire to cap it.
Yes, they they do. I I I don't know that I can speak to their philosophy of how they know that's the right amount or if they understand how that works over a long period, you know, what what the long-term impacts of that are. It's tempting, right? Because, well, if we would just take that fund balance and use it, we could lower taxes this year. That's, that's true, but it's a one-year temporary thing. And once it's gone, it's gone. It's not coming back. So I think it, I think that thought process merits some research and understanding. Doing that.
I don't know, I'm not asking which county it was, but that one that's used to, you know, anything about the philosophy or what.
It's not, I mean, there's, it's political entities, Iowa's for tax relief, I think.
Yeah, they are one.
Twenty five percent is the max you should have, and it's just realistically.
It's dangerous, right?
Unless like anyone personally, I think, too, in your savings account. Yeah, okay, you need a minimum in there, but a little more cushion is nice. It allows you some flexibility for disasters or just, or when we're mandated to do things that we didn't plan for.
Well, when revenues come in in cycles, you're kind of pretty tight.
And, yeah, especially there's so much uncertainty right now, I think, at the federal levels and what's going to happen to our local economies, that we don't know what the future holds for us right now. And that the other difficult thing about governments is that we know in periods of economic decline, generally, the demand for government service rises. And that is a, that's a frustrating thing for people to understand. They have less money, have less money to pay taxes with, but there's more demand for us to do things for people. So it becomes a difficult equation.
Well, I'm just seeing how much has changed. Like I said, even just in the time I've been here and how it grew. But I said it was for Countryview sale and several things that impacted it and caused that. But we knew that that's what we were looking for as a plan or some type of strategic planning, that how we would pay, use it in the future. So it benefited the county and just hanging up there.
And honestly.
Down already, or it has.
Right. Before, before your fiscal twenty four, after you sold Countryview, that took some pressure off your general basic levy for a while. And so at the time that you sold it, looking at those numbers, you, the conversation we're having today about how to fund equipment probably wouldn't have been had because two things have changed. First of all, you weren't at the three fifty limit, so you could theoretically get it out of operating. And secondly, House File seven eighteen hadn't been enacted yet. So if you needed to, you could have borrowed money to do it at that time. And unfortunately, things have changed. So that that change is probably what we might want, how we might want to prioritize the use of those funds.
Hey, Michelle.
Yes.
Your projected estimation on that line is, is that inclusive of the capital expenses? Or is that assuming that that gets that factor in there?
What that includes right now is the portion of the capital that doesn't qualify for bonds. So I've, I have made an assumption that you would do the bonding for the things that you can, but that the rest, that's basically why that's declining, with the exception of fiscal twenty five, because we've made some commitments in fiscal twenty five, which we'll talk about in a minute. But the changes going to twenty six to twenty seven are really. But the changes going to '26 to '27 are really to use fund balance for the non-bond-eligible projects or equipment.
Safe to assume probably that bond rates will go up though, forward?
As in interest rates?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I, I just don't know. You know, we, we have seen, they were coming down, interest rates in general that we were earning came down 20% probably in the first six months of this fiscal year. We've been expecting them to continue that decline, which should, should mean bond interest that we pay should also go down. And the assumptions, I have talked to Spear and we've run schedules, which we'll talk about later too. And we, we are using a lower rate than we used a year ago for those. But it's a challenging time to make those estimates right now, I think. So we're, I think we brought the, the bond issue rate we will pay down to 4%. But I know, you know, I have heard talk that administration might want to eliminate our bonds being able to be tax exempt. If that happens, that would likely mean our rate would go up, right? Because the people holding them don't get that. So, and I don't know if that's going to get legs. I don't know what's going to happen. I just know I read that and was surprised to see it, actually. So those are just some of the unknowns we have coming at us. So I'm going to go back now. I'm going to talk about some of the commitments that we've so far for this year. And if you remember, we actually started, the first line on this, we started in fiscal '24. And that is, I, for lack of a better term, I'm calling it a turnover pool. So what that is, is the amount, if the amount we've budgeted for salaries, that the actual, we're assuming is going to be a million dollars less than what we do it, due to vacancies or whatever else. But, so I'm, at this point, I'm trying to keep that as a commitment because I think we all need to be aware that if somehow departments have basically full employment, we will be dipping into fund balance to do that. It, it's just what will happen at the end. We did commit this year to additional community agency funding of 250,000 to come from fund balance. We've made a commitment to the Waterloo Sport Court for a million dollars. And all the ARPA projects that we approved were, and this is an estimate because, you know, we could have change orders, particularly working in some older buildings. But we have, we have actually awarded contracts that we will need 835,000 of fund balance to complete. And then the capital for this year is that million, 24. So we have total commitments right now of 4.1 million that will bring our fund balance down. I'm hopeful that the first line we won't use, of course, but, but I think it will go down some, so.
This is the third year that we've used the term?
'26 will be the third, so this year is really the second. And it, it worked out fine for '24. And as I showed you, I think, last week, we're pretty much on target, that it should be okay for this year as well. But it also gives us a little cushion for all the other over's of everything that happens in the budget. Well, I could, here we go. So the, and I don't know if you'd rather, well, maybe I'll finish the summary and then we'll talk about projects. I, I've taken the summary that I've given you, the five-year summary, and worked out a plan to, of how we could afford that. So to do that, we need an issue in fiscal '26 of about approximately 5 million. And I did try to round, use round numbers here. In fiscal '27, we would need another five. And fiscal '28, there's a $6 million issue. That's only for the roads building, that 6 million. I am anticipating that they would be able to cover 4 million from their own secondary roads fund sources. And then in fiscal '29, and it, this might just be because we're out a ways, that looks like capital right now is only 3.5 million. But I would anticipate as those years get closer, departments will likely see more things they would like to have. I'll just say they would like to have. So I, I spent some time playing with numbers to try to get our future debt service as kind of level as I could. I am, because this year we're now issuing, this, this 5 million's the first issuance we've had that we're using the money for for several years. So I am, I am suggesting that we increase enough to pay that first year's debt service, which is going to take that levy up from about 16 cents to about 24 cents, we're in that range. And that is already in the worksheets we looked at last week. But if we do that, then I do need, you know, maybe 50,000 a year, a little bit more, not much more, over the next several years till we get to a sustainable level where it's going to stay pretty level for the, the debt service levy, which is something I like to see. It's just easier, easier for budgeting. It's easier for people to predict when we're not having to add to that all the time.
50,000 ongoing or 50,000 for a certain number of years?
Several years. Looks like till about 2030 on here. So, so basically, when we get to doing the new road building, it's going to be fairly flat, even with that. And I am, I'm leveling off some of that with fund balance that has grown in there right now because I think some of it had to do with roads anyway. So it made sense to me to take, taking the highest years off and, and trying to keep the debt service levy fairly level. But since we hadn't had a bond issue the last couple of years, we, we had to bring it down. And so now I'm trying to get it back up to a level where it will sustain itself going forward.
So I'm intrigued as to where we'd be at in sort of relation to other counties with that around quarter, right?
I'll have to, I can do some research about that. I don't know it right now.
Just to make sure we're right-sized.
I think, I, yeah, I believe ours was fairly low, so I don't think this is going to be a problem, but I.
But a number of years ago, we were, if I remember right, maybe a decade ago, there was some, some bridge.
We, we did.
Bridge investors, and that number was well above the 25.
Probably true. That's probably true.
A portion of 40, if I remember.
Your memory must be better than mine because I don't, I don't recall, but I, I'll do that research for you.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see. Do we have any? Oh, well, I just, these are some of the budget highlights that they are today. Countywide tax levy would be 560, almost 564. It's about 553 for '25. Rural levy at 362, so the total for rural would be 9, 926. We have a total tax asking increase this year of almost 1.7 million. Our assessed value increased 1.19%. Our taxable value is increasing 3.17%, but unfortunately, we don't get to take full advantage of that. So we will only be using 2.75% of that, basically. And just reminder, we know we exceed the general basic levy, so we don't need to make investments of that 407,000. And I, yeah, I did the math. If that growth hadn't been restricted by House File 718, we'd only need to adjust it by 194, so I cut it in half. It's interesting. I mean, we have to do what we have to do, but I thought that's an interesting math right there.
Michelle, you mentioned you'd have to come up with 50,000 bucks a year, right? We'd be 50,000 short. Would we be able to just cut into the community funding? If we're, would that be a way to save that money to help out or not?
It potentially could be, but that's coming out of a different pot.
Okay.
So that debt, if we did that, the debt service levy would go down. The, the likely thing, though, is that we're, we're going to have to find other ways to fund our pay increases, other price increases and things that happen in the general fund that we might have to use that for instead. I guess I'm going to put it that way. Because that's the thing, the debt service levy is a separate levy, separate rules, not affected right now, anyway, by what we need to fund in the general fund. So the last, I tried to, I don't, this is by no means meant to be everything that we need to think about, but I think at least some of the decisions that the board will need to make in the next few weeks cover. All the items on this list, and I don't need to read them, but any questions you have, we can talk about.
I felt the ask during the libraries, but would it be possible to get a list of what those communities, if they're asking us for an increase of 7% and change, would it be possible to get an idea of what each of those communities increased their support for their libraries last? I know that we can't do it this year versus this year.
No, I, I do, I do have that because that's how we calculate whether they hit that limit. So yes, I can, I can share that. So I did, I do have this exhibit for you, which I think you have too, to show what we have done for the libraries through fiscal '25. And I'm sure you remember, we had an issue with Dunkerton. Our contract with the libraries requires them, well, requires us to only put in half what they put in. And last year, for the first time, and you can see why, we've done some nice increases to the libraries over the last several years. Dunkerton, the amount we were projected to give them was going to put us over that 50%. But they, they've gone back as they, well, actually, as they worked on this year's budget for '26, they realized they had neglected to include the portion of their employee benefits that they were charging to the general supplemental levy. So we thought they were going to, we were going to have to reduce our funding by 7,400 this year. With the corrected numbers, it's like 3,100. So that, that was good news, I think.
Definitely nice. Really, for our participation, it was good, but for them, it was too.
Oh, yeah. Right, because they, they'll also get another three or $4,000. So yes, and it was good for them just to understand how, how it's working.
And we did 12 last year.
You did.
Doing increases and significant increases than what we did in years before, but last year we did.
So I did, I just added some options and I just randomly picked the percentages, so there's no method necessarily to my madness. But I am showing you what the adjusted per, and that's another thing I did add, by the way, to the top. For the years that I had, I don't have it for all the years. But I had the, they had provided the per capita, the years that I could find that we had the information for, I've added. So I've put the per capita up there for what I knew without too much digging. And then I've added what it would be for '26 based on various levels. And I don't, I don't know if I didn't understand, didn't read through their whole letter, but when he had that request this morning, I don't remember seeing that dollar amount in their letter, but maybe I just missed it. So I think what they're asking for is 217. If I'd have realized that, that would have been one of your options here, but it's not, so. And yes, I, I doubt the statistics session, but.
Is David still here?
Nope, and I don't see any of the library.
If anybody from the library is listening, I'm just curious if the increase was not improved. What's that do for operations for them? Does it hinder things or things remain the same?
Mayn't be requested.
Yeah.
That's a, a decision they all have to figure out.
They've been awarded for a lot of years, I know.
You know, if you, if you look back at the years of the history I've given you, there were two years they got zero.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, it's in that 3% range, most of the time up until, at least for the last three, so. That's all that I really have. You also have, and we can talk about any of them, we have all the, you have all the CIP sheets. And I, here's what the summary looks like. So the total requested for '26, and you can see I'm pulling out most of engineering because we've hung that with the secondary roads fund. So I wanted, while it's in your details, I pulled it out of the totals because we don't need to fund it another way. So 4.4 total, 1.132 would have to come from fund balance, potentially the bond for 3.3 for 2026. And then I did leave, obviously, the 6 million in for the roads building in '27.
Michelle, the conservation for 2027. What was the figure increase for that that year?
If we go to the worksheets they gave us. 2027, I hope I got something wrong, I'm sorry. Um, so look at this going, 2027, bad? Let me get back here. Well, the, is your, okay, okay. So in '27, they're asking to bond for 900,000. It might be '28 that, I should have split the pages differently. So in '27, in terms of projects, they are asking for some Black Hawk Park Road and Trail parking overlay for 200,000, siding replacement on a building at Hartman Reserve for 1,000, partial funding for a couple of bridges on Cedar Valley Nature, Nature Trail for half a million, storage building at Hickory Hills for 80, and one at the administrative office for 70. Then that does increase to just under 1.5 million in fiscal '28, where they're asking for West, Hartman Reserve, West Wing Siding of 45, two more bridges, partial funding for more bridges on Cedar Valley Nature Trail for 500. And by the way, those 500s will likely have to be adjusted. We need to get that down to 400 to stay under our hearing limit. But unless you chose to take that 100, if we absolutely don't get the grants we're hoping to find, you could take that extra 100 and fund it out of fund balance if you chose or something. Those are a ways off, so I, I left him in here at the half million. Paved, paving on part of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail for 400, and a road over Snake, get a half a million. And I, that one, we might have to reduce to 400 as well. So I'm assuming that's probably the increase you were seeing there. Conservation did a really nice job of really thinking what they need over the next five years to get this for us. Because it does help to be able to have a pretty good idea for that time. That's what helps me figure out how much we can afford to issue and how does that affect the debt service levy. Again, based on tons of assumptions, because I'm assuming an interest rate for something we're not going to do for five years. That's a long time. But just try to do it based on what you know today.
What's the timeframe to pay these bonds back?
I'm proposing 10 years. I really started out shorter, but it just made the tax increases higher than I was comfortable with. So you, you will see a lot of time, it'll range anywhere from 15 to 20 years. So if we stick with a 10-year repayment plan, that is still a fairly short repayment plan for capital. It, that should work in our. That should work in our favor, I think, for bond ratings.
Are those refundable? I can't imagine.
We, we generally put it in, generally, maybe at the seventh year, they could be refunded, and it'll just depend on what rates are at the time.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Based on what you presented before, I remember, without including capital improvements, that we were expecting a, what is it, 4% property tax?
Actually, that does include.
It does?
Yes, that does include the new issue, so that, that includes what I, approximately what I think we're going to do this spring. And if, so if you chose to do, you know, less or more, we would need to change that.
Which I think it was, oh, gosh, would that dollar value equated to?
It's close to 1.7 million is the increase for every.
Per, but per $125,000 valued house?
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yep, I do know what you're talking about. It's probably, I think it was a $13 increase annually for residential property valued, and that's a assessed value of 120.
Right, okay.
Just probably, honestly, well, probably on the low end, right? We were, I was, I started out trying to show $100,000 house because it's easy to do the math to your own house, whatever it is, but last year, we had a, the revaluation, and so I, I needed, I wanted to keep that in the base, so that's why the 100,000 home turned into 120,500, because that's approximately what it increased from '25 to '26. And we'll probably have a similar issue to that next year, but it's just trying to help people be able to compare.
Forget my ignorance for this.
Oh, no, it's complicated.
But I already know, but like, what are, what are the cities doing? What's the direction that the cities, Water, Lucet, Falls in particular, are going to monitor?
Honestly, I don't know either, I'm also ignorant of that, I haven't, if they publish, well, the news were published anymore, because we, like, didn't even get news papers for the last week, so I really don't know where they're planning to go.
I don't know the direction for this year, but, I mean, last year we didn't see increases.
Right.
I believe we, we had a reduction in collections two years ago. Last year, we had a small increase in our overall collections, maybe 2%, something like that. So those two years were probably about even, this year would be a little bit more, to be able to start doing the bonding again. But I think once you swallow that, we don't have to have, I mean, unless we decide to do something huge that's not, that I'm not aware of, we, we won't have to have huge increases for debt service again for quite a while.
There's potential that we would be asking for maybe, on a $300,000 valued house, on average, 40 bucks?
Yeah.
45 bucks, maybe 50 annually? I'm just wondering what people, you know, the residents think about that. To me, personally, that doesn't seem like a big deal, but I guess I'm, if anybody's listening, I'm curious for some feedback.
Well.
Well, that would be on their assess, not their market.
Yeah.
That's the hard part, you're, right, your taxable value is 47% of your market value this year, so it, it's always, it's, you know, we are a fairly small slice of the pie, and I will show you that chart at least by the, the final. We're generally around 15, 16% of a person's total tax bill at the county.
And if Gabby's in here, could she find a way to market that to people?
Maybe some buckets?
Well, we try. No, we're chopping up a dollar. You chop up a dollar and show you, this was our piece of it. And it's funny, because Gabby said, maybe we could do that, I started laughing, I said, yep, got that, we can do that.
I think along those lines, because it's, I really liked when we started doing, I think we first started, Sue, looking at the $100,000 house, but maybe when we communicate that to the public, we come up maybe three or four different prices, just do the math for them.
Oh, we can, yeah.
Same, this is the 300,000, this is the 200, this is 100.
Yeah.
Because I think that that does help people, it's been, in my experience, people see the tax increase, they'll reach out to us, just because the bill's coming from Black Hawk County, and then he kind of guided, county did, and they're generally see us as good stewards.
What's amazed me this past week in, in this role is how many different parts of the county operate on money, it's not taxed, a few dollars as well.
Yep.
And it's just, that's very confusing for a lot of folks as well, so I believe we need to do more education on that, so people see their tax bill, think it's going up, well, it's not, everything that we're doing is actually tied to that, so, again, that was one of the things I believe we need to learn.
On the, on the engineering building, have thinking through bonding and all of that likely next year?
I possibly, I need to, we need to do some more work on that. I would like us, in one calendar year, not to exceed 10 million, assuming that doesn't go away. Their interest rates are generally lower if your calendar year bond issues are less than 10 million, so I think as that gets closer, we're going to want to stay at that, and that's why I was interested to know if we can only put those votes on the ballot in even numbered years or not. I ran across that yesterday, and I, I wasn't able to verify whether that's correct or not by this morning, but I would, that would mean you'd probably want that referendum in November of '26, unless that has changed.
Well, some of, and maybe this wouldn't change. Currently, our portion of sales tax, if we were to offer a change to voters on the usage abroad, that definition, that's my understanding, that's, the definition's tight.
It is for us.
Yep, so if that definition were offered, I wonder, I'd be intrigued as to how that might work in our.
So then the, the question would be, if you want to repay that entire debt issue then with local options, or what, what you would be wanting to?
And I understand, if we were to, if we were to make that change, there's also other rip-offs, right?
Right.
That's not to say that it doesn't happen in the vacuum, I get that, but I think having that.
Just an option, yeah, I can, I can put something together for that.
I think maybe the other communications thing we can work on, Gabby, when we're starting to release numbers to the public, a lot of folks, you know, like me included, we pay our property taxes just into an escrow account for our mortgage, and those, we're seeing escrow payments are going way, way up, but it's because of home insurance.
Right.
Which, side note, I think is going to have to become a federal program someday because it's unsustainable as it is right now, but it's, so just kind of explaining to people, like, reminding them, hey, these are all the things that are going into those payments, and this is, this is the county portion, these are the trends we're seeing on this other stuff.
It seems like an appropriate time to, to research revenue streams that we can find just, irrespective of certain departments, and so I'm not going to put Sheriff Neff on the spot, but I would like to circle back and talk with him more about a couple of things at some point. I was looking at the Lynn County website yesterday, with their federal, with their federal inmate home, because they get, I think, $64.70 per head, per day, so that's.
I don't, Sheriff Neff may be familiar, I don't know what requirements come along with doing that, generally.
Right.
Federal things have wrapped up in a lot of red tape, but maybe that's the change in the next few months, too, we don't know.
I would say that's true also.
Yeah, but, yeah, definitely, I mean, I think all our departments are always happy to, you know, explore whatever, we, we all try to pay for ourselves if we can, so, and I forgot, we also want to talk about compensation, so, switch to that anytime, too.
Yep, let's take a quick recess.
So.
Eighty-two hours here.
Tim Jamison found some interesting trivia in fiscal 2018, I think, our debt service levy was a dollar 30.
2016.
2016, sorry, I thought it was 18.
It was 80, it was 80 cents the year before that, up to a dollar 30 to the, um, radio tower construction, the county funded it for Consolidated Communications.
That's also.
We were funding, we would, honestly, we would be out, we would have our debt complete, our debt service levy would be zero in 2028, we don't borrow anymore, because we're.
This is what's happening with the year?
Oh, I know, that's why I, I know, because it, what'd you say?
That's really good for it.
That's really good.
Well, you just.
I tried to download.
Oh, yeah. You're good about doing that.
Lynn and I were, side of the six against the pass about using it to keep the.
Yeah, I know. They may have a lot of them.
Still, so far as the percentage.
There's a lot of them that have 24 corresponding.
We got partners.
We are.
Yeah. It's weird. Yeah, because they get mail from here, to your head.
I know. I mean, it's only 10.
I say that, yeah, you're right.
Not bad, we haven't even hit a ton yet.
They're apparently meeting. Why are you sticking around?
Oh, I, yeah.
You must be getting ready to master.
In fact, I don't think I've had one, it's gone much past noon, maybe it's a little bit.
Yeah, even ours.
People drop off.
Yeah.
I wonder, Sandy, you heard anything on the recorders, the fees and that type of thing?
I wondered, I know.
Remember earlier, she talked about revenue, and I was going to say, since Justin mentioned it.
UCC wasn't real.
I don't know how it went, no, I didn't think so either. Like you said, it wasn't like it was going to be too possible, it never is. We were forever.
So you said, was it, what, what was that, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to.
Todd.
What was that?
Oh, we're. I gotta say it.
We couldn't have tried.
It'd be pretty hard.
Yeah. So, what, a dollar?
Oh, our debt service levy, yeah, it went to a dollar 30 in FY 2016. It was, it, it was around 80, then it went up because of the radio project, and then it's been going down.
Which part of this?
The county agreed, yeah, the radio towers for Consolidated, county agreed to pay for that whole thing, which is, I like to remind people, arguments about.
It wasn't easy, I mean, that took a while, too, though, discussed for quite some time before we did.
That was actually my first interaction with more.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
With this board?
Uh-huh.
I don't remember, I was curious, what'd you do? Would you cause this problem?
Uh.
Did you cause this grave?
I was majoring in record, so, you know, throwing a three.
Just take some time to educate.
Yeah.
Who dropped that?
Craig. Your, your least unused county leader.
Yeah, that's right, the community garden over there.
They call you this.
It's a garden.
Where are you?
Okay, so I'm going to provide the presentation for the elected official compensation review
for the upcoming budget for fiscal year '26. And I'm, my name's Amanda Fezremeyer, HR Director for Black Hawk County. So you all have the slides in front of you, just going to go over the overview here, we're going to look at Iowa Code with regards to the responsibilities for compensation for elected officials, and go over the changes between having a compensation board versus eliminating the board, and what that means for the board supervisors, and look at historical data of comp over recommendations and what's been adopted by the board supervisors. We're also going to look at fiscal year '25 salary comparison, which you all received as well as elected officials, I sent that out previously. We are starting to see some numbers come in from other counties' board supervisors, either their comp boards or they themselves are acting as comp boards, and what their recommendations are for fiscal year '26, and what that kind of looks like for our salaries for elected officials, and I'll kind of conclude my recommendation. We have elected officials here that are available if they wish to make any statements regarding this information, and then we'll talk about next steps and any questions and discussions. Okay, so first thing, Iowa Code, this is under County Home Rule, Chapter 331, so this is specific to the percentage deputies, I won't go too in-depth in this, but it is governed by Iowa Code that the elected offices have the ability to appoint percentage deputies, and it does dictate which of those offices can have either an 85% or an 80% if they have multiple deputies. It does vary slightly from certain offices to the others. For the other treasurer recorder, they can have an 85 percentage deputy, if they have a second one, it does have to be an 80%. For sheriff and attorney, that is a little different, sheriff, it just says that it's not to exceed 85% for first or second, and that the annual base salary of any other deputy sheriff cannot exceed the annual base salary for the first or second deputy sheriff, that would be like our sergeants, that would be our deputies under the Public Safety Union. Attorneys, this is, again, just slightly different, but that they, again, cannot exceed 85% of the maximum salary of full-time county attorney, and then, under this code, it is the board's authority to set and determine the compensation, what they call extra help in clerks appointed by the principal county officers, that's really all of our union, non-bargaining and director positions, that aren't percentage or elected official roles. Okay? Next part of Iowa Code is the county compensation board, so just to provide some context, that it does state that the board of supervisors can vote to establish a county compensation board, and that historically isn't what we've had until the end of July, where our board decided to dissolve the county compensation board, majority vote of the board of supervisors, therefore, the board of supervisors will carry out the duties as the county compensation board. We were on loan in doing that, Lynn County, Scott County, we've seen a few others decide to just go away and dissolve from the county compensation board, especially those that have HR departments, so. All right, the next part of this Iowa Code is the actual schedule, so this is kind of your responsibilities, now that you are acting as the compensation board. So you do have to determine the annual compensation for the auditor, treasurer, recorder, sheriff, attorney, and supervisors yourselves. You will review the compensation page to comparable offices in other counties of the state, private enterprise, and federal government. You did that last year, especially with the countywide compensation study, that did incorporate other relevant data outside of just counties, it included cities as well as state government and, and private entities. There is one special requirement for the sheriff's salary, that the comp board must have the sheriff's salary, so it's comparable to the salaries paid to professional law enforcement administrators, county officers, the State Patrol, Division of Criminal Investigation, other Department of Public Safety, and city police chiefs employed by cities of similar population to the population of the county, which for us is Cedar Rapids, and that information was included in the data analysis, follows those command officer roles within those state departments. Continuing on, that we are to prepare a compensation schedule for elected officials for the succeeding fiscal year, provide documentation to demonstrate how that recommended compensation schedule was determined, which I believe we've satisfied with what it provided, but then at the public hearing at county budget, that compensation board is to submit its recommendation on the comp schedule, and the board is supposed to be included in the actual budget, and then the board reviews that. other department of public safety and city police chiefs employed by cities of similar population to the population of the county, which for us is Cedar Rapids, and that information was included in the data analysis, as well as those command officer roles within those state departments. Continuing on, that we are to prepare a compensation schedule for elected officials for the succeeding fiscal year, provide documentation to demonstrate how that recommended compensation schedule was determined, which I believe we've satisfied with what it provided. Then at the public hearing at county budget, that compensation board is to submit its recommendation on the comp schedule, and the board is supposed to be included in the actual budget. And then the board reviews that recommendation and determines the final compensation schedule. Uh, there is a note here that the board supervisors, so in determining that, historically what's been done is that you, you can't go above what the recommendation is, but you can always decrease, and there's been variations throughout Iowa code as to how the board can decrease, sometimes it has to be by equal amount, that this would probably be, if you have questions on this specific area, I would refer to our attorney, Mike Trinan, but it does state in the code, board supervisors may adopt a decrease in compensation paid to supervisors yourselves irrespective of the recommended compensation schedule or other approved changes in compensation paid to other elected officers. So to me, that means you can just reduce your own to whatever you wish. I don't think there's any, is that fair, Mike?
That's what I understand.
Okay. And then this final compensation schedule set during the budget is filed with the county budget at the Office of Director of the Department of Management and takes effect July 1st. Any questions on Iowa code? Responsibilities that, so this is the first year that our board will be carrying out the responsibility of the compensation board. Moving along to the historical data, again, just providing an overview of what has been recommended by the comp board and what's been adopted by the board of supervisors, and this is a five-year history, so you can see that fiscal year 2021, 22 relatively, I would just say modest or minimal kind of increases that were recommended and adapted. Fiscal year 23 shifted, I believe that's when back to blue legislation may have come into play, plus we also saw a difference in our ability to recruit, retain law enforcement roles, so we saw wages shift pretty dramatically for law enforcement. Fiscal year 24, we did adopt, there was a zero percent adopted for elected officials, that was in the midst of the classification and compensation study, and there was an effort to focus more on the unions as well as the director positions. And now we're here fiscal year 25, the most recent increase that was approved, the board received two point two five percent, sheriff and the command staff received nine percent, and all others were received seven and a half to kind of make up for that zero. Any questions on the historical data? Just to give some insight, I've worked with the comp board for many years, and oftentimes the recommendations, you know, it's not uncommon that, we knew Blackrock County lagged in wages pretty significantly, and so we've done a lot of work throughout the entire county through our roles to change that, but it was often, these recommendations were kind of coming in that everybody just get the same, similar to the unions, we don't look at the market data too much, we just kind of decide what we think the board. That has definitely shifted for not just us, but for all counties, I would say, where it's important that we demonstrate that we are comparing things to the market in a way that, as we said, into salaries, no different than any other role here, so.
You made it.
Yeah.
With regard to exit interviews, is, and if you can't or don't feel comfortable speaking this, if I too, is wage earnings been a topic of discussion when people are leaving?
Definitely in the past, when we had the, our peak turnover, yes, wages, I would say before we did the comp study, so that fiscal year 21, 22, it was COVID as well, but, I mean, wages is always cited as one of the top reasons people left. Work-life balance, also career opportunities, I would say, another one that we saw, but wages typically were, were ranked pretty high.
You know, are there any people, would you know, that's off the top of your head? Any people who left and then came back after they thought the grass might have been greener on the other side and then discovered something else?
Most of our rehires, I would say people have left the state.
Okay.
And gone to like Arizona, California, and they're like, boo, that's, maybe can't find a job there, maybe, you know, I've seen some rehires from that, I don't often see people leaving to Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Des Moines, Lynn County and coming back. Maybe on occasion, public health nurses, I think we just had one recently, that went to like a clinic, decided, yeah, so it's not that often that we see people come back.
Thank you.
Okay, so the salary data that we'll, that we'll be reviewing, it does represent fiscal year 25 salary figures from the top 10 largest counties by population, it does not include Polk County, when we started, we did include Polk County in the countywide classification and compensation study, that was presented to the board a year ago, but that, we also had about like twenty, twenty, actually I think over twenty-five data points, this is only ten data points with comparing us to the top 10 counties, so Polk County tends to really skew that number if we include them. It also includes, again, for the sheriff, state of Iowa employee's salary book, we got that for that role, but we got Lynn County, and this is just by population, so we're the fifth largest county, Lynn is second, Scott, Johnson, ourselves, and then Dallas, Woodbury, Dubuque, Story, Potawatomi. Okay. Here's the data, based on current fiscal year 25 salaries of our own elected officials and the market average we have of those counties I just highlighted, and we'll talk about the board and how that differs, but first just looking at the attorney, they're about ninety percent to the board, or to the market average right now, and that statewide rank, the farthest column is 12th. Auditor, recorder and treasurer and sheriff all are about fifteen percent behind the market, and they all do not break through the top 10 of the statewide rank for counties. The board of supervisors, this one is a little kind of challenging to compare, because number one, not every county has five board members, some have three, so I did include the individual salary of forty-four thousand in the market average, as well as the total compensation for the board, whether you have three board members or five board members, so. But you can still see there that the board is also lagging in comparison to the market either way you look at that market average, so. Oftentimes we do see auditor, recorder, treasurer are the same for most other counties, ours is just slightly off, that might be something to just make those the same potentially, but not off by much, but we typically see that those three kind of rank similarly with, in other counties, so. And then usually attorney is the highest paid elected official, followed by the sheriff. And typically the board is, I would say, most counties, Woodbury, Dubuque, Potawatomi, Dallas, ourselves, Mississippi. Uh, it's, you know, one of the lower salaries for elected officials. Any questions on this? So like I said, fiscal year 26 numbers are starting to roll in, HR directors across the different counties are asking what boards are approving or sharing what they've approved, so Lynn County did approve four percent for their elected officials, except for the sheriff is six point five. Scott County is anticipating to do three and a half for most, with sheriff possibly being four. Anything with an asterisk is that it's pending board approval. I have not heard on Johnson, we have ourselves. Dallas County, their recommendation from the comp board was 10%, the HR director didn't feel that they were gonna go to 10%, she felt like it would be probably close to six, which is what non-bargaining, their non-bargaining get similar to ours with across the board in merit. Woodbury, this is their actual figures, so four percent for most elected officials, attorneys eight and a half, sheriff is five, I've not heard on Dubuque, but they tend to follow, I would just say, they're more conservative. Story County, their board, two point six, attorney six, sheriff six, and the others six. And I haven't heard on Potawatomi. All right. So looking at the market data, looking at what I'm anticipating the market to move, we are recommending from our office a 10% pay increase for elected officials. That would be the, with the exception of the county attorney, that would be five percent, just based on the data that that role is closer to the market average. It is okay to be behind the market average, it's, you know, most of our, I shared with you on the attachment that I sent, the department heads right now are about ninety-five percent, like plus or minus five percent to the market average, I think that's acceptable for elected officials as well, especially those that act as department heads, running the everyday operations of the, you know, attorney's office, treasurer, recorder, auditor, sheriff. Adopting this recommendation would improve the external competitiveness for the tools, they really are the last ones, I would say, that fall in the compensation study, where we have room to improve, and especially when it can improve our internal effectiveness with all county leadership positions. So again, if you compare IT director, VA director, facilities, HR, finance, and look at that internally, those are trending more in line with the market, and that's where I'd like to see the rest of these get to, so. That's the basis of the recommendation. Estimating where that will land, the elected officials, it's just, you know, important to know, even the director roles and even with the unions, it wasn't all done in one year, it did take multiple years, even with community contracts, you know, what we secured in was to build on each year, so this would be taking a big chunk, and you want to just get, what I anticipate will put, position the elected officials to be about ninety percent to the market average next year, just based on what I'm seeing in other counties, board of supervisors that are approving those pay increases for those. Looking at the board in its total, you know, that eighty-five percent was the competition of the board regardless of five or three members. That is subject to change, its possibilities could be wrong, but I've been doing this for a while, and kind of, you know, guess about where it's gonna land. That would be, you know, assuming the full recommendation of 10% and estimate the market based on the increases that have already been coming through. Any questions on this? There are no questions at this point, I just want to open up if any other elected officials wanted to come before the board, since previously they had representatives on the compensation board as a ELT role, so this is, in fact, with Mike trying to kind of their opportunity if they wish to come before you all, I'm gonna open it up to them.
Good morning, Board, Sandy Smith, County Recorder. The mission of the recorder's office has always been to provide great customer service to the citizens of this community. Over the years, the recorders have acquired more responsibilities, such as the register of vital records, which had a significant impact on day-to-day operations of the office. On a daily basis, the county recorder works with at least four state departments, the Iowa Department of Revenue, the Iowa Department of Public Health, the Department of Natural Resources and the US Department of State. We also provide services that are not mandated by code, that some large counties do not, such as passports and hunting and fishing licenses. We provide these services because it's beneficial to the community by bringing in revenue to the county. So I just want to thank the HR, Amanda and her team and the board of supervisors for their work the last couple of years trying to align the salaries to market value across the state. It is very important to an office like the recorder that has two deputies as well. When my pay was zero two years ago, I had two deputies that were two of 20 people in the whole county that also got zero, and they're long-term employees that work really hard and pay taxes in the community, so that was unfortunate to see, so thank you very much for your consideration. Yes, sure.
Revenue and, like, income from reporters' offices, does that go to the general fund?
Yep, most of it.
Yes, some of it goes to state offices, obviously, when we do a $15 birth certificate, we get four dollars, eleven hundred goes to the state.
Of course.
Yeah. So, a lot of our services, that, that is the case, but that's why we like to do passports, we get to keep approximately $50 for every passport we do right here in Blackrock County, it's one of our biggest revenues, we make about $125,000 a year providing, we're a passport acceptance facility, which is not mandated by code that we do, and it is a lot of work, we do have to be certified, we get inspected by the federal government every year, I have two passport agents that have to take a yearly exam, so it's a lot of work for our office, but it brings in revenue and it provides a great service, we're very busy, we don't take appointments, the post office may do five to seven a day, we may do 25 passports a day, so that's why we like to do it, and it helps the community and it's the county a little bit.
Sandy, I was commenting, I think, before you started this, when you took the break, you had mentioned earlier about the opportunity that was out there for us from the recorder's fees, you thought there might be some changes.
Yes.
It didn't sound like that was maybe going as low as we thought.
It's kind of hit a little bit of a roadblock, there is, there is, it has to do with our third-party vendor that does our e-recordings, there, there's going to be a bill drafted that would still increase our recording fees by $10, but they, it's behind the scenes with our e-recorder provider, so it would actually bring in more money to the county and give them less money, so it's kind of.
Oh, yeah, lots of interested party.
Yeah, it just happened last spread.
Okay, I thought it was, it was promising, I think.
Very promising, yes.
That it was possible, so.
Yeah, it's still promising, it just may take another route to get.
Another year, or year or two or whatever, yeah. Well, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Good morning, Nate Napsher. First off, I just wanted to thank Amanda for all the work on that, usually the comp board does most of that, and she had to step up this to do that, so thank you for all that, very thorough on that. For me, not a lot to say. I'd say the big part is under 331-907, it talks about the mandated raise for the sheriff or keeping him in line, or keeping her in line, so I just ask that you kind of keep that in mind, and especially if you have the chiefs on there, but when you take the chiefs on there, they generally do a little bit better than we have historically as well. So the 10% is great, I make a nice wage, 10%, I'm certainly not gonna complain about that, realistically, it could probably be 15 or better, but I don't expect that, so I just ask that you keep in mind, 331-907, and from there.
One thing I just wanted to comment on, that I learned at the New County Officer School a few weeks ago, was what, what elected officials do from county to county, it's really interesting, so I had an auditor from a very rural county that was down there that did a, a presentation block, and she was talking about having a staff of like two people, and just busy, non-stop, and I don't know what she made for her, her salary, but it kind of did be kind of interesting, varying from county to county, I mean, you look at the Lynn County board, making 131,000 plus with three of them, but it begs the question sometimes, like, what, what do they do from county to county and job to job, that there's such a large discrepancy from one place and that?
Yeah.
I know, I wouldn't expect you to know that, but it's just something.
Well, it would be honestly any other compensation study that I've done, we would, that, it's kind of a unique thing about the board, is yeah, you know, normally what we would do is we would, I mean, to me, those are the identical positions, but yes, they can vary, I suppose, and what that, you know, all of your positions are deemed full-time, while it is different than I would say a full-time county attorney or a full-time treasurer, things like that, but it is kind of an interesting concept, because even some of our elected, you know, we're really fortunate that we have in our elected office this leadership that most people, I think actually all have promoted from within, and they've wanted to further their career by running, and so they carry a lot of knowledge and experience working in a traditional setting, but that's not always the case for other counties, and even in the past year, we've had some that, you know, you only have to show up like two days a month technically to maintain your status as an elected official, and you're still paid that annual salary, so, yeah, and it, it is kind of a unique, not what I would say is more traditional, is how we compare salaries, when I'm looking at an office specialist in Lynn County versus here or in Scott County, because it does vary some, but nonetheless, it is a requirement of code, it is something that will come before you all every year to determine that schedule, and it is, we use our market data to make the best decisions that we can, but doesn't mean that, yeah, you can't kind of try to understand if there is something they're doing differently, or, but ultimately you're all elected to carry out the responsibilities of the board.
That's true. But, and that's why typically, I think, we've always looked at probably a little more closely the urban counties, and some that have the similar size, responsibilities, staffing, that type of thing, just a measure too, not that we don't look at all, to consider others. And you've been doing, I know Nate talked about the job you've done, and Sandy mentioned too for this year, but she's been. too for this year, but she's been doing a lot of this for the compensation committee. Sometimes information that they took to utilize, and sometimes they chose not to, but you've been providing a lot of this good information, so that was why it was so easy for us to kind of say we do it now, because, yeah, it was, we take it to heart, I think, a little bit more than they were, you know. They were trying to judge what the supervisor wanted so many times.
I really appreciate you both of us trying to, you know, compensation across the board, not just electeds, but...
Oh, yeah.
Right. Being mindful of the market is important when we look at retention and elevating folks, so.
And that compensation study was a lot more work, I think you found. I mean, we all did a lot more detail than a lot more time-consuming, and a lot more went into that than what we, probably some of us anticipated at least, sorry.
Right.
So, thank you for doing that, it was helpful. Took us, I think we said it would have been 40 years. Hard to admit that, but it'd been 40 years since we did that, so a lot went into that, so thank you.
Even the process itself, I think that our P was released in '22, and it wasn't completed till the end of '23, and then it wasn't used until negotiations in January '24, and then realized and implemented, just this past July. And by that time, you didn't worry about the market. I do see the market cooling off. I mean, what I'm seeing recommendations, like to see these numbers for elected officials from Glen County, from Story County, you can kind of see that things are starting to cool off, it kind of needed to. I think, we're no different than every other county, when it, look at our financial situation and how we're going to be able to continue with certain caps that are required of us. So, and I also just see that typically, you know, that pendulum, it just kind of swings one from being more advantageous to a job seeker, to then going back to more advantageous for like an employer. We do tend to thrive in those areas where people look for stable positions in government roles, and I think we're due for that kind of, you know, I guess, opportunity. But, yeah, I don't anticipate, you know, there have, I will acknowledge the board's done a great job, and even for the comp study, making adjustments what I would close for fire. So, I mean, you certainly have, even with that zero included, we talked about that seven and a half, that one year, the 15% for the sheriff, those all could have been done over multiple years, and some of those were taken in just one big, yeah. And that, and 10% is not, I mean, we might be one of the higher ones of the recommendations, but we're also not breaking through the top 10. That's what I'd really like to see. Most of our directors are at like 7, 8, 6 for that statewide rank, and again, just being the fifth-largest county, I think that's, that we aim for that as a goal, over the, whether it's all in this year, or over the next two years, that's for you all to decide.
Could you, could you actually provide on that slide 14, what that, what that county rank would be?
Which slide?
The FY '26 estimates.
With your recommendations.
With the recommendations, what does that mean in terms of, right, so similar to...
Davis, that's going to be one of those...
Slide 11.
That's one of the things, I, the world I come from know this, if you're always behind, you'll never catch up unless you do a big bump, because if you're behind, you'll never get there, just trying to follow.
Yep.
At some point, like Amanda said, you have to make a bump, just to get to the point where if you had a 3% raise to match another, you're not even close, you're not ever going to be moving up.
So, yeah, I didn't include, I didn't go through and kind of figure, well, what would that statewide rank? I would hope we at least break through the top 10 when we are doing, like, is that what you mean, like this column here?
Yeah, yep. If we can, if we can, if we can...
Kind of gauge that.
See what that is.
Yeah, I can try to. Yep, it, yep, no, I can, because honestly, with these already coming out and being shared, others are going to start to follow this trend.
Yep.
I mean, I don't anticipate, unless Dallas just, you know, which that's pretty well compensated, and Dallas County, that's a growing area, that I don't think they'll do their 10%, they could, but I did throw in what, 10%, but yeah, I could certainly add that to this column to kind of gauge where that state rank would look like. So, you know, I went into this thinking, well, you can't go lower than five for, you know, anyone, and really, it's, I mean, I do think the recommendation, that's what we've tried to work with the comp board, is like, make the recommendation based on what really should be done, on what you think the board's willing to accept, just make it based on what the numbers are, and I do feel that 10% aligns, and you can justify that. Now, looking at, and I didn't quite provide this, I did some very quick calculations, so Michelle's already included 3%. So, just on wages alone, that's like $64,000, $65,000, that does not exclude all the taxes and all the other, you know, pieces of that. To get to this full recommendation, that's about 100, additional like 120,000, again, just straight off wages, not really including the Ipers and all the other.
Michelle, as a government employer, we have to pay employment tax per person due?
We pay FICA, the social security.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then, we, we don't, what we don't have to pay, what's different for government, is unemployment. We don't pay a set rate per employee per year. We have to reimburse the fund if we have an employee that qualifies to be paid, so that works differently.
So other than social security, it was like 15% or something?
Social security, 7.65%, Ipers is 9.44% for most of our groups, but the sheriff's deputies are jumping a huge amount, from 8.51% to 12.09. So that's a 40% increase in what the county will contribute to Ipers on behalf of our sworn sheriff's staff.
Is that calculated in your numbers yet?
Oh, yeah.
That is?
In my...
With your ratio rate, yeah.
Yep.
Through three.
But yeah, it's not in, you know, at least that 10%.
Not in...
No.
And we're contributing it as well.
Yes, and include it.
They are, they are also going up to 12.09, but...
Do they need that?
Yeah.
How much?
They got their notice yet?
Yeah.
So...
Judging by the smiles I saw this morning, thinking so.
I don't think they realize what's happening in July.
So, you know, next steps, looking at what, where you go from here, I don't expect any kind of decision to be made, this is just your first look at this opportunity to review. You may want to look at having some budget scenarios based on these recommendations. We've done that in the past, where we've done kind of the full recommendation, 75% of it, you know, half of it. It'd be nice to get some direction, I think Michelle would appreciate that, and, but you at least have, you can kind of go off, you know, 10% for everyone, 5% for the county attorney, so.
Are we able to see, and would we be able to see for those unions, what that market, their percent to market?
I don't have that out, I just would be looking at live, at the comp study. Unless the agreement that I have with the others, that we've all gone in, the other county HR directors, that's like, because I'm a bit of a budget, if I do get, I will be getting data from that, but I can tell you like, public safety right now, Glen County matched us, now they are paid more, but they did 444 for their, so again, I'm starting to see unions, I mean, everyone's starting to just kind of come down, and kind of have a little bit more back to what we traditionally always had, it was like 3%, 2.5%, 2.75%. I would anticipate when we go back to negotiating and we open wages in two years, I think, yeah. You know, we'll have data to look at the unions again, and to kind of see if there needs to be some adjustments, but, so.
No. So non-bargaining, you have it at three?
I have...
Oh, you're going to...
I've put it in at three, and again, that's a decision you have to make, pardon.
Right, so, and I think the directors, did we do two?
I think it was three, except for the higher.
The director, yeah.
There's a few that are higher up that were 2.5.
So last year, for non-bargaining, it was 4%, but if you were a director, it would be like public health, county engineer, you know, those, they were 3%. And I would anticipate we do the same thing, larger, you know, with a percentage, larger your base, and that you don't need an 2.5. It adds up, I guess, kind of similar with the county entry, I mean, a 5% increase on 162,000, so. But the average across the board that the unions are automatically receiving, this does not include step increases, any of them still get step increases with this unless you are topped out, so is about 3.44. So we did, you know, with non-bargaining, anchor about that 3%, but that could, you could increase that if you felt that was needed, to get close to this 3.44, I think 3% is fine. But yes, determine the final compensation schedule for elected officials and their percentage deputies, and then determine they cross the board for the non-bargaining positions, and you can split that between directors and non-bargaining, as we did last year, and then union wages are set.
Do you have any idea, I was curious, how many people are, is it a people that are topped out?
Don't. Well, we've had a lot of turnover still, so I think it's probably less than, especially like, I'd have to look, but I could look at that, I could view, yeah. It was probably more a few years ago, because we've had with Rita's retirement, the former treasurer, the treasurer's office agreement has completely changed, and we've seen that reflected in their budget, that their salary has gone down.
Yep.
I would say law enforcement, we just had all those retirements, and then the promotions, so same thing. Public health, there was a huge shift there, so we do have some positions that can be hired above step one, like a public health nurse, but they still do a great job of maintaining that internal equity, so I'll look and see if we, we have that information, so we can provide, yeah.
It's definitely less than it was. I can't, I don't have numbers, but I just can tell from doing it that it's gone...
And even we added some steps, like for example, unit four facilities in a row, saying unit one, we added a 10-year step, because they topped out pretty quick, and so some people that were topped out, now they, unless they've hit 10 years, aren't topped out yet. So, to kind of be more competitive on the back end, the higher end of that scale, so. So, yeah, it's likely less than what we've been in the past, yep. Which is, you know, room for growth, but, so.
A couple departments that likes to hear the big hooch sound, yeah.
Yeah, right. And that is really all I have, so are there questions or thoughts?
Thank you. I'll put it there.
Yep, you guys. I know this is, I was policy review, do you guys have to be at the, I know you have a closed session, right? I mean, I'll stick around, and if we have time, but it's, maybe we can, before you adjourn, did you come back out of open session, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just cut it a little bit, but don't worry. Running behind, and you guys just have to be at Hartman, right?
Yeah.
One o'clock? Okay, all right? I will get out of your way, thank you so much.
There's going to be no refreshments today.
Yeah, we do have to have lunch, yeah.
No worries.
Nobody's speeding.
Yeah. I'll get the food, yeah. You got the fastest drive with you.
Yeah. I would get it just...
All right. Item 11. Any reports or information from the board?
We made a progress, many lists.
There's still a couple of openings, so I just, we just wait till next week and see if everybody's got something that's there. I was going to ask this too, we, if what everybody's thought, for, you know, I look at those standing committees that are almost all internal. Some probably, maybe we ask the committees, how often they meet, when's the last time they met, should they have different members, should they know that kind of thing, and get back to us? In the meantime, the committees that were serving on, kind of add those up and do that, maybe we don't just have those commitments made, so.
No, who gets to do it?
That sound like okay?
Yeah.
That's some bigger work, do the internal soon, but...
Yep.
Davis, this being my first meeting, I want to first pass along to folks, whether it's staff or folks that have just come to look for us here at the courthouse. My plan is to be here every Monday, and during the day Tuesday, when all other than meetings. Wednesday is kind of a plan of reaching out and also meeting with folks. Thursday afternoons and every other Friday, man, is what my plan was. That was one of the things that came to me for different directions of being available for the folks, both again, staff and for the general public and taxpayers. So, it's been interesting, I've been here a week and a half, ready, digging into the numbers, bothering Michelle a lot, and trying to get handle on that, that with Amanda yesterday. And I plan on getting out as much as possible to give it to the different departments in the future here soon. It's amazing trying to catch up with everybody in such a short time. And we do these other assignments. I want to be able to be here and again, state what's going on, so we're all better communicating with one another. I've been, attended the one strategic planning meeting, ready, and very impressed with the direction with that, what I learned last week. Again, the accountability that we're looking and asking for, not just for ourselves, but for the staff and our employees, and taking care of them, making things better, better work environment, and better services for our folks, so. I just want to say thank you to the voters that place their trust in me and put me in this spot, and I look forward to helping and working with everybody here and with our staff to make things better. Appreciate this opportunity.
Welcome.
More?
I was going to say, you can forget Tuesdays, being here, we know Tuesdays are the board meeting. Planning sessions.
So you're a little...
No.
Those two things, yeah.
All right. Anybody else? All right. So, enter closed session, this is a resolution pursuant to provision of the Iowa Open Meeting Law by the authority of the Code of the Iowa, Section 21.5. The Blackout County Board of Supervisors shall proceed in closed session for the purpose of discussing purchase of particular real estate, only where pre-mature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase price of government's body or property. The minutes and the tape recorded of the session closed, under this paragraph, shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed.
I have a question, Mike. I, I have a question. The minutes, it's, it mentions if, when the transaction's discussed is completed, what if it never is?
So, a couple of things about this, as soon as the board decides, you may recall some of this, when we talked about purchasing the Courier Building, and it's part of a courthouse expansion project under our, and we, during closed session, where we were discussing that, it was determined by the board informally that they weren't going to pursue that option. At that point, we had to open the session, so, and we literally did right in the middle of that meeting. Now, what this means is that any time where the board determines they're not going to go down this road, that is where this becomes open record.
At that moment, okay.
So it could be as early as today, it could be as late as when we complete the transaction. And that's why they say, once the transaction's completed, then it's public record. Transaction's not going to be entered into, you know, we attempt negotiations, they fail, at that point, it will become open record.
Absolutely, yeah.
And by the way, this is a good time to tell the board, the courts are starting to look with a little greater scrutiny on a closed session, so it's something where we want to be very clear as to why we're doing it in this case, because we're discussing a specific piece of property, we don't want to tip that over or off, to be thinking that there might be an opportunity there at this point, until, until that can be explored privately, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. All favor, can we close session, say aye?
All right. General rule, it's all...
Oh, resolution, sorry. Mr. Graves?
Brandt?
Yes.
Kurt and Bob?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Shorts?
Yes.
All?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to propose to end the closed session? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion, yes. Do we now need to have a motion?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The...